Paul Story.
Here.
Sandra Zachary.
Here.
Park and Fair.
Here. This time we'll do the ladies.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number four will be recognized guest. And I'd say we thank everybody for being here. Appreciate your attendance. And I guess we pass on to Sandra to pass it up.
Is there another one of these up there? Agenda?
Item number five is new business. So if anybody has anything they want to say.
I had talked to Sue Davis a few weeks ago, and I've seen her this morning, but they are going to stay in the building that they are in the rest of this year, possibly next or next year. We don't have to worry about finding another building. So I'm just going to let everybody know that they will be staying there. Last week we talked about trimming some trees. I looked at them. I think if we could get a couple of bits on trim, trim, on some trim, 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 trim or tree guys.
Yeah.
To do it because these over here by Karen's office, they could be very dangerous as tall as they are. I do have a phone call on a mat tree trim in Moskow. I thought I'd give him a call. And see if he can get a couple of others and get that done. We're also going to have to look back at Karen's rug. I'm afraid we're going to plug it, put up some more sheens over there on that side of that window. We're still coming in.
It's coming in or where that tree's at, isn't it?
Well.
It was.
I'm not sure, I'm not really sure if it is that or coming down. I don't know for sure. But anyway, I was going to get some instruments and I'll get it back on the agenda to let everyone know if we can get that done. We've got a pretty good plan.
Sound good on the agenda.
Check things out.
Saturday? Not Saturday, sorry. Wednesday, the state fire marshal or the representatives will be here. We'll go through the courthouse just on a consultative visit. Make sure we're squared away with what had been requested about making sure that we're good to go when we go to start applying for grants and stuff. So he's going to be here Wednesday at 1:00. If anybody wants to be here with me, I'll walk through with him. Any recommendations that he has for us to get good and square. So that's all I've got until we get to the burn ban. We're getting ready to start all the mowing, so.
Anyone else?
I was just curious the status of liquor by the drink for the county. I kind of heard it might be on the agenda for today, and that's kind of why I came over. But where we were and where we were planning to go, if it's an appropriate time to talk about it.
And yeah, we've already approved the ballot. The DA had written up a resolution on that, and we have sent it to the election board, and the election board is going to send it to the state.
We'll be on the June 26 ballot.
And it's already passed, yes.
Couple of questions. One about the Sunday language, the ability to sell on Sunday. And are we going to? Do we have an education plan as a county to get the vote out, to support it, and talk to them about why it's important?
We will since we get it back and have it 100% approved.
Anybody else? Nobody has any more new business. We'll move on to item number six, approved commission proceedings from previous meeting. Because nobody would vote that way. I'll second that motion with the exception of one change. I mean, I'll second the motion though with that one, one error correct. I was saying, okay.
Just put the correction on the back page.
Fair enough.
Park and Fair.
Yes.
Sandra Zachary.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Item number seven, approved blanket POs. And for this week, we have $1,000 to flick towards the SSF-2. Then we have one for $1,600 to Performance Foods out of SSF-10CC. Then we have one for $400 to flick toward the SJF-2. So we have three blanket POs for this week.
Make a motion in favor of seven.
I'll second it.
Yes.
Paul Story.
Yes. Item number eight will be discussed considered approved slash not approved of burn ban. Aaron?
Yeah.
What's the feeling of the fire departments?
Well, we're in a we're actually under flood watch for the next 24 hours until Tuesday at 7:00 PM because they're expecting quite a bit of rain to come in starting this evening through tomorrow. But right now, the conditions are the exact same that they were last week. We can relieve that ban at any point if we want to reinstate it today. But we might get enough rain tonight to lift the ban. I mean, obviously, the fire chiefs want to keep it in place until we get the appropriate amount of moisture.
Well, I make a motion that we do go ahead and approve the burn ban until we have more rain.
Okay.
Sandra Zachary.
Yes.
Park and Fair.
Yes.
Paul Story.
Yes. While we're on that subject though, like if it rains three inches tonight, and somebody started the fire tomorrow, they technically wouldn't.
They're still not covered legally. But if it rains three inches tonight, we can get together and have a special meeting and relieve the ban.
The only reason I ask that is when I checked in on this burn ban policy, that if it rained within seven days, or there's a chance it rained within seven days or it rained over half an inch.
Right.
You know, if somebody started the fire, there's nothing you can do to them because is that true? I mean, is that?
According to what forestry has told me, whenever I talk to them about that, they said we still have the ban is still legally in place until we lift it.
Okay, fair enough.
So I bet, I mean, I'm all for if it rains three inches and we want to get together tomorrow, we'll have a special meeting, get together tomorrow and lift it. That's what we'll do.
Oh, I'm fine with the burn ban. I'm fine with everything. I'm just checking on the legality.
That's what the forestry told me.
I did get a list several years ago about, you know, if we had burn ban today, like three inches tonight, somebody started the fire and, you know, if they burnt somebody's house down, then we couldn't get them because if it rained over a certain amount, certain amount, it was automatically.
Right. And I'm just going off what Wilberton Forestry and your district told me.
Okay. Moving down to item number nine, discuss considered changing excise board meeting time to 9:00 AM.
We've done none of that, haven't we?
It's on the agenda, so.
The excise board approved that this morning. I think the idea was it would move our time a little closer to the commissioner's time and give us less time to get people to weigh around the court house here between the end of our meeting and the public commissioner's meeting. You guys approved that, well, we appreciate it. If you don't, we're okay with that too.
No, that's bound to me. I like the motion. Seconding my thought.
Paul Story.
Yes.
Park and Fair.
Yeah.
Sandra Zachary.
Yes.
There's no problem. Item number 10 will be signed appropriations, transfers of appropriations, sex, season POs.
This is one of the things I picked up.
That's the light ass.
I asked my youngest grandson if he wanted to be pulled out. He said, this is the best.
He already has one.
He said, I can make you a little bit if you want it.
I'm pretty handy. That's the goodest question. I usually walk around and hide it. Board of the cards and stuff.
Yeah, you can buy that. If you have a farm truck, you've got to buy that. Give me a friend. This is the only one. I saw these courses. It's still a lot of them.
I'm still old.
Discussion's over. I can lay. I walked out the room. This is a lotion. Yeah, he wouldn't he wouldn't encourage it. He's just working it out. Kind of got in his pocket, I guess. I'll see you later.
I must say, my. Love, thanks for coming.
Thank you. See you.
This already has already done there.
That's what it is, two years.
Yeah, but if it does not pass, then it'll be two years before we can do it again.
Part.
We have to be two years before we can run it again, if it does not pass.
Well, that's gonna really hurt.
I mean, why did you tie it to the beer sales?
Beer sales, the reason it's tied to beer sales for whoever listens is just just correct if I'm wrong, but three point two beer is not considered alcohol.
It's considered a non-intoxicating beverage and it was
That's true.
It was in response to prohibition.
Prohibition, yeah.
Beer was in excess of six point oh percent.
The president at that time said, if you elect me as president, I'll do away with prohibition. And he couldn't get it done, so he done the three point two beer. And like Ray explained, that's exactly what it was. It didn't consider it alcohol beverage. But now your beer's gonna be six point and that's considered an alcoholic beverage. Therefore, that's the reason we're going to the ballot.
Well, they still won't be able to sell the three point two.
There won't be any three point two.
Three two's going away.
It's going completely away.
It's going away.
There won't be any three point, right now, they said, I'm sorry, I don't know. But right now, they sell three point two beer.
Right.
And it's gonna, nobody's gonna
There's not gonna be any three point two beer.
Nobody's gonna can it anymore or bottle it anymore.
That's correct.
It's just gonna be
It's gonna be six point.
There'll be no beer sales anywhere except in liquor store. All convenience stores or any store cannot sell beer no more.
That's the way I understand it, unless this passes.
If the ballot don't pass.
Right.
Now, will this ballot
That's gonna shut down a bunch of places.
Right, now will the ballot let restaurants serve liquor?
If it passes.
If it passes.
If it don't, they won't.
If it doesn't pass, there won't be any alcohol sold in that city, the way I understand it, except that liquor store.
I think that's right.
And that would be, so if it doesn't pass, that's what you're looking at.
My sister used to run a convenience store out at number nine man. She said seventy percent of her business was tobacco and beer.
Oh, yeah.
So, if you, if you take beer out of the convenience stores, you're probably gonna cut the revenue by half.
You'll have to get some convenience stores closed down.
Yes, I think that's that's another still question.
If this passes, would a person to, uh, would be able to open a bar, say, and, and sell liquor by the drink?
Yes.
In Haskell County?
If, if, if his license had been perued, I think.
Yeah, they have to go through the rabo, you know, just like, you know.
I know in the past, they could serve beer, but they couldn't serve liquor.
Three two beer. They would do it all.
It just wouldn't be important that the, that the public get educated on.
Educated on it, right.
Well, even if you don't drink beer, if the convenience store down the street goes out of business, you have to drive to the next county to a convenience store.
Well, yeah, I don't, that's, I've never understood that issue myself anyway. I mean, people's gonna go to the next county and it's taking tax dollars away from us.
Plus, they're not just gonna buy beer, they're gonna be buying bread and milk and eggs or
Rock, you been to Tyler, Texas?
I've been to Tyler, Texas, been about thirty-five, forty years ago though.
But I wanna tell you, you circle Tyler, Texas, and there's beer stores circle that whole county, 'cause it's a dry county.
When you go over into Arkansas and you run into the same thing, there's always a liquor store right at county line. On Friday evenings when the checks are cashed, there's a big line there. And if you got a bunch of employees, they know where it's at if you're working away from home. It's the same situation on the gambling in Arkansas, don't seem to pass this. You know, they're against gambling, but all of, all these casinos is set up there on the state line. Getting that money from their state, which is good for us.
They voted it down, didn't they?
Yeah, they voted it down, and they didn't really accomplish, 'cause the people still gambling.
About two out of three car tags in Duran, that big casino down there about Texas. They run a big old rayhound bus out of Dallas.
I have my issues with the gambling deal myself, but fact economically, why would you vote it down if it's next door to you?
Unfortunately, every time you gamble, many of that kind of stuff, there are people who just can't control themselves.
Well, the loan companies, you know, they don't allow in Fort Smith, but little tiny, our Coma's got like twelve.
Right.
More casinos in Oklahoma than there is in Nevada.
But, yeah.
There is.
Yeah, it is.
That is no bad.
That's right.
That's another issue, the state needs to take up, as how that money is dished out, I believe. Somebody's getting more profit than what it was they led the public to believe they voted in.
That's pretty typical.
Yeah, that's typical. You're exactly right.
It was actually, the lottery and the Indian gaming was actually supposed to go into a special fund. And then it was to be on top of any funding that might go to schools and it was to be granted. And Stigler could apply and be considered for a grant, maybe to build part of this new school that they're asking voters to approve. You know, you could do a safety and whatever. It never was really intended to be a day-to-day support of the school system.
They represented it like it was gonna be the savior for education, but it didn't, they didn't. Whenever they just want you to vote for it.
Well, that, that goes back to Bottle Club and Liquor County Auction back in the late fifties, early sixties. Liquor by the drink and what all else has been gonna be the savior.
Yeah, it don't ever work out the way they
What you do is you put money in up here and you take it out down here and give it to transportation or
When you try to get somebody to give you, give you their money, you don't tell all that you know. It happens a lot in
Sometimes that
In government operations.
Those was cheaper, less, more, less.
You want to get that fifty-fifty? Stuff like that been passed in pretty big, around, eventually see Ask Over Ask Again. You know, the joke used to be that liquor by the drink is long, you may just show them that you're staring at the purse. Well, he started enforcing liquor off and shutting down a lot of them.
No, we already talked to him, that this is the last one, yes. Yeah, it's the last one.
Friend of mine was in the restaurant business back in the sixties, they were trying to figure out how to get liquor by the drink. So they decided that if old man gave it, E.K., the old man, if he, if they can give him a board and get him to add a toilet line before it well, it's been liquor by the drink, so
Yeah, exactly.
They decided if they can get old man, E.K. in on it. Then if they could pass it off. So this guy went up to see the old man, he says, if we can get you or not some county auction.
They don't have any warrants, not any warranty.
So we do that, because everybody's interested in Paul's, Oklahoma County, and they knew those two don't they put it on that county, county to go drink.
We're taking every cost we can take, we want to boil up all the steel water to clean out the jug. That's what it costs when the system goes out.
I ran the convenience store, I began to work out.
That ain't the only one in that same that reads in.
It don't have, it don't move the depth.
Yes. Yes, but depth in it, and the mechanic said it was contaminated, I said, well, you know, we buy the jug.
Probably two years.
But then we've been buying that, I don't buy that. We've been buying fifty-five gallon jug, but we buy it in the gallon, pour it in there, and then we take the steamed water and pour in that jug and clean it out, put the top on it. And we change the hose that comes out of it, but any kind of open one, they say that's death.
Like a crystal, if it draws anything up, it's just
Oh, this is all green.
That one was, I guess, just opened up, so they don't need
Well, they days, you don't have one. Real have trouble with it.
And you did not have a warranty on it?
Something breaks down with Caterpillar, they'll find a way, it won't be out of warranty. I've always been for a month of the way.
So did they, they come and get it or did you, they come here and
They come, they take it, redo the whole system.
How long was it gone?
That one right there, all can only say months, they brought it along.
So you had two, you didn't have one?
Yeah. So I never buy all the things, they, they have to go with it. It's not It's gonna blade the road, so it's blade. Yeah, but that, that doggone dead. I always think it's a we didn't put in too much. And I, oh, that was that, uh What's that deal on Rick, that, that was big round two, it's the virgin system on it. It's the, what the death goes through. You know, I don't mind.
I don't have any kind of death, no warrant.
No, you don't. But I'm saying it's a, saying it's a big old round thing, even on the dump trucks, it's, it's, anyways. It's not a, it's not cheap fix, and that's a use, but it's gonna come out.
Can't believe they didn't have that broke down.
Your CBI area?
Uh, she didn't know what the picture that they, they might be, right there, I can't figure it out.
It'd be broken down somewhere, it might be, have to get it from the state.
I was thinking, no contact, finish with something.
Insurance, know how much is funded to county law?
That might be what we had to do.
The county or
You want a report written up, or whatever, how much we get through the county.
He went to bills office, found out how much alcohol tax we received. She said she couldn't give a thing, didn't know what it was.
Broke down, right there.
It's broke down, I know.
I mean, for the county, for the, for the law.
Would you know how much they leave?
Yeah, I've seen it.
I was gonna say, it should be broke down, because it's different.
But, we're, we're talking about two different taxes here also, we're talking, you're talking about the alcohol tax, we're talking about sales tax.
Beer sales.
On sales, I mean, well, it's two totally separate taxes, but it's all gonna be generated off the same thing.
What do you mean, it's pretty totally different? We get it off sales tax.
There's not a tax on alcohol sales?
No, it comes off the sales tax, I mean. Whatever sales tax brings in, we get a percentage of that.
I don't know how they could break it out of sales tax. Unless it's taxed individually somehow.
Well, just like fuel, forty-nine cents a gallon.
Part of gross estate, part of gross accounting, and that. Just like tobacco tax, and it's included in the price of the product you buy, not sell, sales taxes on top of that. Say tax on gross sales, uh, the sales tax, if there's an additional tax, it has to be included in the product's price. Correct? 'Cause they don't charge you a sales tax and an alcohol tax both over the county.
Like yes. Yes, highway taxes included in the price of the farm.
Sales tax is gonna be a totally separate tax. Yeah, they don't charge that to cash register, that extra, it's included in the product.
Comes on, paid on the package.
Along the summon, alcohol sales would be the same way when they, the supplier, vendor, whoever, probably adds that on, pays that. Whenever they sell it to the retailer.
The state gets that tax over, the state imposes.
Right. So we have to come through the wholesale.
So the only thing the county gains is what they gain in revenue off the sales tax, directly. Indirectly, part of that money is funneled back to the county, to the state.
Right. So it would be, it would be two separate taxes that the county would receive.
Right, you would have to know how much alcohol revenue actually the county produces to be able to figure out how much, uh, tax revenue we actually would receive or lose if we don't pass it. Our, our issue is we won't be able to say if we don't vote for this, we're gonna lose this amount of money of tax revenue.
Plus, anything else associated with that property.
Correct.
Because if somebody went into a store, most likely they're gonna buy something other than beer.
Right.
And then if, if it's a loss of revenue in a store, if it's enough loss of revenue, that store may close down. You'd lose that business a hundred percent.
Which is John's stupid.
Have you heard anything about the public's opinion? About It hasn't been publicized, any word has been gathered, I know of, that anybody even know about it.
I don't think anybody's even talking about it.
I haven't heard anybody talk about it second here.
Well, I had mentioned it to several people, and they feel like it should pass because it's gonna help the community stay better than, you know
Well, it's gonna, it would have to be people that knows what they're voting on. And like we say, all, all things been said in here is liquor by the drink, and it's definitely not liquor by the drink.
Well, by definition, it is.
Well, that's what
By definition, it is liquor by the drink, when you do away with three point two beer.
Well, I don't think so.
Well, why, why, when you go to six point beer?
Liquor by the drink's not on the ballot, that's what's been handed to me.
Not worded that way.
No. Now, I don't know how it will be when it gets to be finalized, but the ballot title is default drinking.
But you're gonna have a copy of the proposed ballot before it's actually submitted to the public for a vote though.
Yeah, and, and like I said, I called, I've called Joe Daniels several times. And I can send him what we have to see if he thinks at least we worked it any different now.
If he knows what we're trying to accomplish, but surely does.
And he does, 'cause we've, we've met with him and he has come, uh, to other chamber meetings last year also.
He's wanted to pointed out the, uh, the big, uh, pointing out the, the economic effect it can have on
For the community, yeah.
Sounds like you gotta hit it the right way then.
Well, bottom line, the city and county both needs to push it and, and educate the people of what the ballot is for and what it, how it's gonna affect the county. Without enough issues, that getting voted down, lose more revenue.
We've got plenty of issues. Plenty coming up too.
Had a little lady told me from wherever she was from one time, she said, now, I need you to be, to vote against this bill that she gave me, remember? And I said, okay, now what's your opposition to that bill? She said, the preacher told me, told you, and tells me to vote against that. I said, you know which bill it is? No. The preacher was against it. I forgot what issue it was, wasn't too big of a deal. I think I voted against it just because.
Unfortunately, that's what we have, we have a lot of people.
There's no way.
Depending on who they listen to.
Yeah, that's the, that's why it's so important that you get, get out there and get the public educated on the pros and cons of this deal.
Well, it's gonna be a big election for June twenty-six anyway. It's gonna be a pretty big election for June twenty-six anyway. Be the first of electoral officials and plus the marijuana and all everything.
The marijuana folks will be
Yeah, so I think it's gonna be the biggest one of all, the first one. Rhonda, is there, what else is gonna be on there, you know yet?
All right, I have any emotion on item number two.
I make emotion on two?
Emotion, I, but Sam is saying, look, all right.
Sam is asking, yeah, Spartan friends?
Yes.
Foster.
Before we adjourn, if anybody else wants to have anything to say about to let everybody drink, if that's, we can leave the floor before
If you're gonna have the ballot back, when are you expecting it back?
Well, gotta get with Karen, 'cause Rhonda, um, mentioned Karen, we gotta look, we gotta send it a certain way.
We should have time to campaign for it or against it, whichever you may decide to do, I mean, is anybody in here?
Yeah, I guess you go, we could go, yeah, I mean, if you want to, we'll go over and read it.
Well, I'm just
Well, I mean, that's
Whenever I'm telling people about it, I wanna make sure, I'm telling them how it's really gonna work. I don't, no guessing or hearsay, I wanna be, tell them how it's really gonna work.
But campaigning for it is one thing, but when they're actually read the ballot, if they sit down and read the ballot, if they don't understand it, or it says something in there to turn you off of instead of all, that's where it really counts then.
That's why I said we'd go over and read it.
Okay, but seventy-five days out, we have fifteen days.
We've got plenty of time, we've got this going ready.
And that's fifteen days from today, 'cause it's
That's the dates due into the state, that we have to have our partner on it, you, uh, there's, you can't wait till the deadline back.
Right.
Yeah, I understand that.
Because we have to put it in our system, the state has to put it in theirs, they send us a confirmation back, and I mean
That's what I'm saying, we need to
You have, you have to sign off on that confirmation, and then we send that back to the state.
Yeah, I'm with you on that, with
So you don't wanna wait till the last
No, we don't.
Lot of stuff that has to go on.
Same, if anybody has anything they wanna read it, they can read it today.
Is that the approved ballot that you got already?
Same for the same, today, the day you read it.
And that's what I was looking for.
Just taken off of
We, we tweaked it a little bit.
We just kinda used it
We used it basically
Sandra, have you got a copy?
I'm looking, I'm looking.
And I guess I just It's the same, it's just tweaked it a little bit.
My main concern was if it, it just basically said liquor by the drink.
Let's go over and read it.
She said it don't.
Probably did, use a newspaper, kinda probably help educate them too.
And the meeting's real good about doing, and then, uh, I know Janice had talked to me also, and she had gotten something, something at, something from another county. She said that helped, that would help us in what they could have done also. And I haven't got back with her, I spoke to her today again.
I think social media's gonna be pretty important as well, Facebook later in the
Right, yeah. I do not have one with me, I thought I did.
If anybody wants to rate it, we can walk right over to Ron's office and read it.
Well, as long as you got other agencies helping you word it, uh, I just took it that y'all worked up something.
I did, well, it won't take a minute to
No, we had, we had other ballots that we looked at that he, that he sent.
Yeah, we looked at like three of them, four.
Yeah, I know, there's about four or five of them, and then, you know, basically, what
And they were all facing the same thing as the, as far as from the economic state.
They were a dry county, that's what it is, yes.
Okay, item number eleven is to adjourn, I'm gonna make that motion.